Good evening and thank all of you guys for being here tonight. Today is June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Our thought for the day is when you leave behind, what you leave behind is not what is engraved in stone monuments, but what is woven into the lives of others. That's Paracles. We're going to officially call this meeting to order tonight. I think I'm gonna pray tonight. Let's pray together. Father, we thank you tonight for your grace and your mercy. We thank you for your loving kindness that you show towards us, Lord. We thank you for allowing us to live into a community that we call home, that we love. We're just grateful for you being our God and we be your children, God. So actually, if you would, tonight, to lead and guide us tonight, let us make decisions that's best for this community. In your son, Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you so much, commissioners. I seek a motion that we approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and seconded by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? Commissioner Sanders.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make a note. I did send a request to have the Fairview Community Park added to the agenda. And the reason why I'm speaking on this right now, because that community, since two thousand twenty-one, or probably beyond, has been asking about safety measures. And one of the things that we discussed was to have the sheriff come before us to talk about safety measures. Well, the sheriff did that in two thousand twenty-two. We have not even moved forward with any safety measures of Fairview Community Park. It is now two thousand twenty-four. They've had a fire. They've had other things in that area. We are liable. It's based on operations and the board of commissioners provide the safety measures or the funding so that we can do various things. The sheriff also stated that if we put the cameras in that park, he will have his crime unit manage the park, watch the park, monitor park for twenty-four-seven. And we have not moved forward. And I have residents, I think some of them in the audience from Fairview Community Park, Communities, I'm sorry, Fairview Estates, and they are upset because we, as a board, have not moved forward since two thousand twenty-two. And the request was to have the sheriff come before us, stand here, and tell us exactly what we were supposed to do, and we did nothing. So we are putting that area at risk because we have not moved at all. And I know you were not here, Mr. County Manager, but that happened in two thousand twenty-two. And the sheriff came before us, told us what we need to do, make the lights higher, and we did nothing. And so this is why these things are occurring, because the board has not moved. And I include myself as I'm a part of the board. We haven't moved. So those things are going to constantly keep occurring if we don't move on those safety measures and keep putting it off. Thank you.
Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We definitely want to make sure that all of our community is safe and that they basically feel comfortable with living in this community. So I want to ask Mr. Cooper, since you weren't here during that time, do you mind following up with our sheriff and getting a full report of what his recommendations are? And then, at a later date, place that on our agenda and have the sheriff here again to follow up with us to make sure that we have all the details, we have the plans, so that we can move forward to help this community.
Commissioner, I have no problem with that. In fact, I will schedule that meeting really soon.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All in favor? It passes four-oh. Thank you. Next on the agenda is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity that we allow citizens to make comments about agenda topics only. Agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so. If you would, please come and state your name and your address for the record, please. Have three minutes to do so. Agenda topics only. Agenda topics only. Thank you. Next is the chairman's report. I don't have anything today to report. Mr. Cooper, I'm gonna turn it over to you for the county manager's report, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members and residents of this community, I come before you today with the county manager's report. As you all know, we just had our public hearing in relationship to our budget. During my report, I'm just going to take a deeper dive into the budget and give some clear understanding as to our wants, our needs, and our needs, our wants. People, purpose, and processes, that's what we're about here. This budget encumbers all of that. The people are the residents. We want to show in our purpose that we're being responsible stewards of finance as it pertains to governing this community. In terms of our processes, Ms. White has done a tremendous job in trying to put together a budget where we're fiscally responsible and we remain whole while not compromising the level of service that we're committed to. So when we talk about the expenditures here, we are looking at the different departments and what it takes for them to operate on the whole. And one of the main things that we did, as Commissioner Edwards stated earlier in the budget hearing, was that our line items stayed the same in terms of departmental needs and wants. They understand the needs, the wants, and the wants, the needs. When we talk about expenditures, let's look at it from a contextual standpoint. The defined benefit pension fund, as we stated earlier, that's two million dollars. The four-point-five percent COLA, that's two million dollars. The health insurance increase is one million dollars. The paving funds for public works was two million dollars. And the additional debt is five hundred and fifty thousand, the ABM debt that we talked about. So the added expenses, again, are over seven-point-five million. But again, when you look at inflation, last year, it floated around four-point-one percent for the majority of last year, and then it flattened out at three-point-four percent. The increase to our budget is three-point-one percent. So again, being fiscally responsible is the key. So you may have noticed in the last slide, there was a COLA in the defined benefit plan for our employees. Those are employee retention mechanisms. On the whole, we have seven hundred and twenty-four employees that work for Newton County. And they understand Newton County is a great place to serve. And roughly sixty percent of them reside right here in Newton County. And when you look at that sixty percent on a whole by district, twenty-nine percent reside in District One, eighteen percent reside in District Two, fourteen percent reside in District Three, eighteen percent reside in District Four, and twenty-one percent reside in District Five. So again, not only do sixty percent of this workforce work here, they live here and definitely have a vested interest in the betterment of this community. As I stated earlier, the two items, the pension and the COLA, were used as retention mechanisms. And why do you need retention mechanisms? It's simple, because you want to retain outstanding talent. Without the workforce, we can't have paved roads. We can't have buildings inspected. We can't have the tasks that are directed by you all, the taxpayers, in terms of making sure this place is a great place to live and serve. So we needed some type of components in terms of employee retention to keep our best and brightest stars. And again, our workforce is dedicated, and they remain consistent in their efforts to serve this community. Again, we talked about the defined benefit. It's two million dollars. This plan is through ACCG. And last year, there was less spent on it because we did it mid-year. So here, we're covering it for a full year, and it is two million dollars. So again, being fiscally responsible, our needs, our wants, and our wants, our needs, because we need seven hundred and twenty-four employees. The four-point-five percent COLA, just to let everyone know, we're out of market industry standards in terms of competitive pay. But again, the people here that are considered our workforce are thoroughly immersed in the jobs and the duties and the responsibilities that they're assigned to. So when you look at our salaries by the numbers, a hundred and forty-eight of our employees make under eighteen dollars an hour, roughly. Ninety-two of them make under twenty dollars. And two hundred and forty-seven make under maybe twenty-four dollars an hour. So the average salary in Newton County is forty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. When you look at like-populous communities, for example, you're going to see later on in this slide, Lounes County and Fayette County comparables, you'll see that there are some differences in terms of the workforce and their budget. So when you look at the cost of living in this community, to rent any type of property here, it's just under two thousand dollars a month, with the average purchase of a home just under three hundred and fifty thousand. So let's talk about mileage rates. When you look at an adjusted annual estimate of population that happens every year in census bureau reports, you'll see, like I stated before, Fayette County and Lounes County are of like size. Fayette County has a hundred and twenty-three thousand residents. Lounes has a hundred and twenty thousand. And again, with the annual estimate, adjusted population in FY, excuse me, in two thousand twenty-three, Newton County was projected to have just over a hundred and twenty thousand residents. So when you do the comparables by county and you look at the operating budget average of Fayette and Lounes County, you're looking at just over a hundred and thirty-five million dollars when considering their general funds, operating enterprise funds, capital projects, and internal service funds. These budgets are supported by an average mileage rate of nine-point-six. Now, our mileage rate is eight-point-four-three-nine, if I'm not mistaken. So when you look at the number of employees on an average that both of these counties have, they have a little bit over seven hundred and forty-three, full-time and part-time staff. So I want to commend this board because I know they're often inundated, and understandably so, by the residents who are taxpayers about taxes and increases in taxes, and how can we avoid those increases in taxes. But I want to share and reiterate that I'm sure what these distinguished board members have shared with you all, that it's not solely on the board of commissioners. There are other entities that affect tax hikes in various municipalities. And when you look at that, for example, there's a Newton County Board of Education, there's a Newton County Board of Commissioners. They individually establish their respective mileage rates. So if one entity increases their mileage rate substantially, while the other rolls back their mileage rate, the goal of providing a true tax relief may not be accomplished. So I just want our residents to understand that. This concludes my county manager's report. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. I had just one question, Mr. Cooper. Are we looking at, from your estimation, are we looking at a rollback this particular budget cycle?
We're looking into that right now. We haven't made it exclusively concrete as of yet, but we're looking, we are looking into that.
Okay. Well, I just want to say this, and this is to Commissioner Edwards. I heard when you said that on some of these discs that we have, that possibly we could use a little bit of, I call it fund balance, emergency funding, and I can't think of a better emergency funding than trying to lower, if we can, some of the tax burdens on our taxpayers. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Sanders.
First, I want to thank you for this information. I love data, so thank you so much for providing this information. You spoke in regards to the fourteen percent workforce, and I was just keyed in on District Three because that was the lowest, and District Three is the closest towards going towards the city of Atlanta. And I believe that, well, not believe, one of the issues with District Three is that the economic development, why people don't work in the area, because that area for District Three, a lot of my residents, like sixty percent of them, work in Atlanta. And so a lot of their tax dollars are going into Atlanta and as well as Conyers in DeKalb County because they're going home. So my concern would be, my plea would be, is we can work with economic development to bring more into our county. That can also increase our revenue into the county, our sales tax will be going back because we know Rockdale County, their budget, their general budget is higher than ours, but their population is less. And it's because District Three, a lot of us, and I can say myself as well, we shop in Rockdale County because it's easier versus going downtown. So that will be something we can work more with economic development to bring some things that will, that area more so will be to help increase our revenue versus other things. So that would just, well, thank you for the information.
Thank you. Next on agenda is extended agenda. I seek a motion, please.
So moved.
Is there a second? It's a motion by Commissioner Mason and seconded by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes four-oh. I do want to make one note. Let me go back to number eight, number eight Q. We want to make sure we make sure that's Spring Hill Park. Spring Hill Park instead of Spring Hill. Number eight Q. Yeah. Yes. Yeah. Yeah. Guys, we're going to take a brief recess. We're going to adjourn back at seven-thirty. Give us a few moments here, okay? Guys, I seek a motion that we move back into our regular meeting, please. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and seconded by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes four-oh. Thank you, sir. At this time, it's approximately seven-twenty-nine. I'm gonna bring Shayna up here. Guys, we had to take a pause because we advertised to seven-thirty, and so we had to wait for seven-thirty before we go in our public zoning. And so now we're able to go in. It's seven-thirty, we're able to go in our public zoning, just in case you guys was wondering why we took a break. So Shayna, it's on you, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Board of Commissioners. Our first case today, this is old business. It was actually before the board in April, and it was tabled for a community meeting to be held. In this case, number CUP twenty-four dash zero-zero-zero-zero-two. Proposed use is office with fleet parking located at ninety Almond Road on eleven-point-four-five acres. The tax ID is zero-zero-two-five-zero-nine-three. Future land use is a development node, and the existing zoning is highway commercial, and it's located in the Almond Tier Two overlay, which is a non-residential mixed-use tier. The watershed is the Yellow River, located in Commissioner District Four. It was actually redistricted from three to four. And owner is MI Sweetwater LLC. Our petitioner is Owen Midor, and representative today is Jordan Edwards. And again, applicant's intent was to establish office with fleet parking and outdoor storage. And just a brief history, March twenty-sixth, the planning commissioner approved the petition by vote of four-zero. On April second, the BOC, as we said, tabled it for a community meeting to be held. The community meeting was held on five-fourteen. We had a total of seven residents that showed up for the meeting for a very good discussion. At this meeting, the applicant took the opportunity to inform those present just a little bit more of their business in terms of the types of trucks, how many trucks they were planned to employ locally, and they will be using the existing building and parking area for the pickup trucks for this business. So this fleet does not have any semi, no semis, no rigs, no dump trucks or anything like that. It'll just be pickup trucks. The residents expressed concern for the increase in traffic from the trucks as they currently face traffic buildup and congestion in that area. And of course, they inquired about how many jobs were going to be provided and if local residents would benefit, to which the applicant replied, yes, they are planning on hiring And again, the subject site, so the parcel has landed, as you'll see later on, it is irregularly shaped, which kind of restricts the uses that can go there. It is flanked by I-20, and then, of course, the Yellow River and railroad tracks, and then a gas station on the other side. And again, it's eleven-point-four-five acres and currently zoned highway commercial. And this is just a site plan analysis, just repeating some of the things I repeated earlier. So in conclusion, applicant is proposing to lease the office to an established provider of erosion control services. And the provider would primarily use the property for storing sealed fence products in the existing building and the parking of small number of pickup trucks, and I believe the number was somewhere around twelve. But basically, the staff will show up in the morning, early in the morning, get their trucks and equipment, and head out to residential sites, you know, to deliver the sealed fences and all the erosion control materials. And staff recommends that should the board approve this cup, it should be approved with the following recommended conditions. So should this petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners, it should be approved for a cup for an office with fleet parking, conditional, subject to the owner's agreement, to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. To the owner's agreement, abide by the following development standards and regulations. One, the cup will be for an office with fleet parking. Two, prior to the allowance of any outdoor storage on the property, applicant will provide a plan showing the area in which the storage will occur to be approved by Development Services. Three, outdoor storage is limited to twenty-five percent of the total lot. Four, outdoor storage areas in the refuse containers shall be screened and buffered so as not to be visible from the public right away or any abutting residentially zoned property. Five, truck parking is limited to the fleet owned by the business. This is one that we added since the community meeting. And again, their fleet will only consist of the pickup trucks. Six, the business must obtain all approvals from the department, as well as obtain and maintain a business license. And seven, wrecker service, salvage, abandonment, recovery, or repossession of automobiles and trucks, and the temporary storage of said vehicles is prohibited. And this is the location of the parcels. You can see it's irregularly shaped, very elongated, the Yellow River. To the east over here, you have the Almond Road to the west, and of course, the railroad tracks to the north and I-20 to the south. Currently zoned highway commercial, so it runs right along I-20. It's in the Yellow River. Development node is the Flume as well as Parks, Rec, and Conservation, little green area here along the river. And this is a survey of the parcel, and just an aerial view showing how they're going to utilize anticipated parking, which is already existing, existing buildings that they will be using. If there are any questions for staff, Chairman, this, we already did the public hearing on this back in April. So I will leave it up to the board to determine if they want to do another one.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I think during the discussion that we had with the community here at the county building, there was, I think it was supposed to have been about no dump trucks. Could you kind of explain that a little bit to what we talked about, no dump trucks? And once again, please.
Yes, the community's concern was that there would be the large trucks, dump trucks, or the eighteen-wheelers, or the semi-trucks in there. And this is not part of the fleet that the applicant intends to have there. They're using smaller pickup trucks for their business out there. So I do have a stipulation in the conditions where the fleet will be limited just to the pickup trucks that the applicant is using.
Did it say how many pickup trucks?
They had mentioned somewhere around twelve, approximately twelve.
Okay. Is that a part of, if it's approved, a part of what they're going to be applying to, doing by?
If they're going to use the twelve trucks is what you're saying?
Yes. Other words, the number of trucks, just wrecked truck, twelve trucks. I think it was, I think the notes that I remember you doing was twelve trucks, and what else was it?
Right. So I have number five, the truck park.
Yeah. I'm asking a question. We both were at the same meeting.
Okay. So you want to put a number on the trucks is what you're saying, Commissioner?
Hold on. So what's the question? Ask the question.
The question is that we discussed during the public meeting with the applicant, as to us, how many trucks that would be on site of the four acres. And he gave us a rundown of what it was, and I didn't take notes, but Commissioner Sanders, because it was kind of close to her district, took notes. And so I was asking, Commissioner Sanders, do you know how many trucks it was?
Yes, sir. He said twelve, but we want to make sure listed in here, there's no more than twelve because that was one of the concerns of the residents. So is that listed, that it's going to be no more than twelve trucks?
We can amend number five where it says it's limited to the fleet owned by the business and just add a number to that one.
Okay.
If that works.
Yes. And then the only thing was, is it only going to be pickup trucks? Because that's what they were stating, it's only going to be pickup trucks.
Well, yes, they have indicated that their fleet will consist of pickup trucks. So that's what will be parked there overnight when the workers come back with the trucks.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hold on, did we get a motion? We didn't get a motion here. Let me get a motion on the floor. Let me get a motion on the floor. Commissioner Henderson, give me a motion, please.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we approve with the amended regulations.
Is there, Commissioner Henderson made a motion that we approve this with the recommended conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders now, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Appleweight, so I did not know this until I was looking at the agenda. This is the old Haztec site. This was a hazardous waste company at one time, back in the late eighties, early nineties, I believe. So if this were not to be approved, could a hazardous waste company move in there tomorrow? By moving tomorrow?
They would probably have to come before the board for that. I think something for that intensity would probably be more for the heavy industrial zoning.
So that was probably a cup as well, right?
It would have to, if it does qualify for that, it would likely have to be some kind of a conditional use permit. But because it's in the overlay, and I don't have the chart in front of me right now, but that would be more of a heavy industrial use for like M-two zoning.
Okay.
For something that intense.
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor? All in favor? It passes four oh, thank you. Ms. Appleweight.
Our second petition this evening is a modification, it's MOD twenty-four dash zero 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 two. The proposal is to modify the conditions of zonings for REZO four dash zero five four, number three C. Streets shall have sidewalks on both sides. This is for the Lindhurst subdivision, phase two. The existing zoning is R-one and R-two, single-family residential, and it's also located in the Salem overlay tier one. It is located off of Spring Hill Road on sixty-two point five eight acres. Tax ID numbers are thirteen dash one and thirteen dash six six. It's located in Commissioner District Two. Current owner is listed as AHV Partners LLC. And our petitioner and the representative today is Mark Walton. And again, applicant is requesting to modify the conditions for a previous zoning that was done in two thousand and four. And they're just asking to remove one condition, which um is the street having sidewalks on both sides of the streets. So in March fifteen of two thousand and five, the Board of Commissioners, they approved the ninety-eight lot subdivision for Lindhurst. Phase one was final platted and some of the lots were built out. And the developer is now working on final plating phase two, which is currently in the LDP stage. And again, one of the conditions that they would have to adhere to for phase two is to install sidewalks on both sides of the street. And um, because there are no sidewalks in phase one, they're requesting to this condition be modified and removed so that the subdivision will show consistency at buildout. So the existing condition to the owners, um, it's three C. Streets shall have sidewalks on both sides, and again, they're proposing to modify the condition to remove it. So these are the minutes from March fifteen of two thousand and five from REZO four dash zero five four. This is included in your packet, so I won't read through it, but I just highlighted the areas that we're going to look at. So we've got the motion here to approve and the condition we're looking at is three C. That is highlighted here, streets shall have sidewalks on both sides. This is the survey, so side, uh, phase one is this area here, um, it's already been platted, they are, it's not completely built out. And then phase two is this portion here that they're looking to complete and final plat now. And this is just the aerial. This is Spring Road up here and then you come into Lindhurst subdivision phase one and then phase two is back here. And it's very close, you can see to the rock, they'll count into Underwood Crossing. Zoning R-one and R-two, it's a dual zoned parcel. And of course, the Salem overlay only covers one portion of phase two, this is not in the overlay. And it's in District Two. So in conclusion, the parcels, phase two of Lindhurst subdivision, um, it was approved back in oh four by the Board of Commissioners. Developer has now returned to finish it, uh, finish the subdivision. Um, during phase one, sidewalks were not put in for whatever uh reason. Um, I could find, I could not find anything on file saying that any, anything was filed with the board to not have them built. But we accepted um phase one when we final platted it. So the developer is requesting that for consistency, the sidewalk condition be removed for phase two. So should the Board of Commissioners recommend approval of the modification to condition three C of the two thousand and five petitions? Staff recommends the following conditions be applied to the property. So should this modification petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners, it should be approved conditional, subject to the owner's agreement, to the following enumerated condition. Where this condition conflicts with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the board. One, to the owner's agreement, to abide by the following development standards and regulations. A, condition three C of the petition, REZO four dash zero five four. Streets shall have sidewalks on both sides shall be removed. And B, all other conditions of the original rezoning dated March fifteenth, two thousand and five, and approved by the Board of Commissioners shall apply. And if there are any questions for staff, if not, this is a public hearing, uh, public hearing, Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, we're going to open it up for the applicant and those that would like to speak in favor. You have ten minutes to do so. The applicant and those that would like to speak in favor tonight, you have ten minutes to do so. Please state your name, your address for the record, please.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, I'm Mark Walton. I'm with Patrick and Associates, our office address is nine twenty-eight Black Lawn Road, Conyers, Georgia, three zero zero nine four. Um, and I'm here on behalf of AHV um partners. Uh, the director basically presented uh the whole uh situation. Um, when the original phase one was developed in the, right before the Great Recession, uh, the final plat was completed, a builder group purchased all of the lots. The developer really just stood back and then it wasn't too long after that that the banks took back the majority of the lots. Um, in the last probably five years, primarily one builder purchased all of the lots that one of the banks took back. And they finished all of the houses and it was basically an oversight about the sidewalks. Um, and uh, so now we're going into the next phase. Uh, we've got plans that have been reviewed and basically approved. Um, and so we're to the point with the sidewalks and we're just asking that that particular zoning condition be eliminated so that we can have consistency between the different phases of the subdivision. Um, then, uh, I'm here to answer any questions beyond that and I would like to reserve remaining time for any rebuttal.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? You may come up. Please state your name, your address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Lisa James, I'm one of the residents in Lindhurst on Oleander, where the sidewalks will impact my property, um, if, if installed, will impact my property. Um, my thing is that I think because we need to stay uniformed, I'm speaking against the sidewalks. Um, very nice neighborhood and we would like to keep our neighborhood uniformed. I'm not sure if the new developer is willing to add the sidewalks in phase one. If that's a thing, then we can take a vote on it throughout the community and we're asking that, you know, you give us thirty days, sixty days to just trying to decide on what we want to do. We did talk to Commissioner Mason last night and, but for me, because it doesn't impact only my street, I'm against the sidewalks. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Board.
My name is Stephen McFarlane, address sixty Rosemont Parkway, Covington, Georgia. I'm a member of uh Lindhurst Estate Community, I'm also the HAW president currently for Lindhurst Estate. Um, in regards to the sidewalks, I think it would be a great addition. However, just like Lisa stated, uniformity is what we really care about within our community. I think Lindhurst Estate brings a great value to Newton County. Um, if you take a look at the houses there, we're trying to just keep uniformity within the community. So if they come in and they establish sidewalks within phase two and phase one, or the pre-existing homes that were previously there do not have sidewalks, it just does not present you, um, uniformity and it also devalues our community, right? We're trying to keep the value of our community rising, especially with Lindhurst Estates and the other adjacent communities that are high-value um homes. We want to keep that platform on an even playing field. So what we're truly requesting is, we can't force the builder to do, to install sidewalks, but what we are requesting is that we do like the sidewalks and we want the sidewalks, but if they aren't unable to do so, we want to just make sure that uniformity is, is the main thing for us, all right? I reserve my time there, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? You may, come on up, sir.
My name is Kamara Jones, I live in twenty Rosemont Parkway and have been a resident of Lindhurst Estate uh for almost fifteen years. Um, this is my view on the sidewalks, I, I'm in favor of them. There's, there's many studies out there that show that sidewalks have value. There's safety reasons, there's life, quality of life reasons, it's an assortment of them, which I won't go. So the data shows that if the builders or the developers want to do that, the sidewalks is to their best interest to put them in. And they will easily be able to uh, to recoup their cost from, from doing something like that. You know, a- as far as the oversight, uh, is it, isn't it the developer and the builders to understand the, the guidelines and the rules of, before they put in their development? So I don't think we should be penalized because of an oversight from a builder or anything like that. I think we're a reasonable community and one of the things that we'd like to do is be able to speak with the developer and the builders. I think uh from, I overheard some requests that they're, they're asking for some different choices. And I think that uh with a time of uh maybe thirty days or less, we'll be able to come to some resolution and work with the builder. We're, we're not unreasonable people, um, you know, we, we all want to make money in this and, and we will. And so I think that that's the request, to pause this for thirty days, let's get together, work something out and come back. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Good evening, uh, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Chairman, Vice Chairman, thank you. I'm Trevor Berry, one twenty Rosemont Parkway, Covington, Georgia, on behalf of uh Lindhurst Estate. We're a friend of the Commission Board and friend of Mr. Mark Walton. We definitely want to continue to uh protect the integrity of our community at all costs and whatever we can do in that effort to do that. We just want to be given a fair chance that we can continue to increase the value of the homes that are existing and any new homes that will be participating and be built. And that's our, um, the energy that we want to have as we go forward with the new development in the um phase two and phase three. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Lisa Jones Croson and I'm one seventy Rosemont Parkway. My request to the Board is to give us time, we're asking sixty days to see how it will impact our community either way. Uniformity would help the aesthetics of our neighborhood. We don't know if we're willing to do it and we don't know how it impacts our properties. Personally, if we've been there twenty years, tax-paying citizens of Newton Counties, I've been the second house in Lindhurst Estates and we implore you, please table this to give us time to regroup and see how it impacts our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, my name is Janice Clark. I'm at one forty-five Rosemont Parkway. I was the first home in the community that bought from the original builders. June sixth was my eighteenth anniversary living there. I endorse all my neighbors' sentiments regarding the sidewalks and I'm asking for time for us to make a decision, at least thirty days, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Guys, I just want to clear up something right quick, um, and we can do this by just a, a nod of the head. So make sure we got a good understanding here, you guys support the sidewalks if they're going to be uniform throughout the subdivisions, is that correct?
No.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Cool, I got you, I got you. Okay, I got, I got you. So now we're going to close it out and we're going to open it up for ten minutes for those that would like to oppose, oppose the sidewalks. Oppose, you may come. Okay, so, okay, so y'all are good, okay, cool. So I'm going to ask again, because I got to ask for the record. Um, so you don't have to come back up and say again, just, just, you're good, we got your, we got your statement here. Okay, we got it, we, okay, okay. So anyone else would like to oppose? Anyone else would like to oppose? Anyone else like to oppose? Thank you. Uh, Shayna, if you would, please come on back up, uh, would you like to come back up? Your time, okay, please come on back up, Mr. Walton, sir, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, again, I'm Mark Walton. Um, we do, I know lots of the, the residents there, we would like to have a decision. We're, we're getting to a point of the year that if we get delayed thirty days or sixty days, we're going to get out there and we're going to be caught in the winter. And so we would like to have a, a decision, one way or the other. The developer and the builder have both said, yeah, they're willing to put in sidewalks, but they would prefer not to for the conformity. Um, they intend to build houses that are just as nice, if not a little more expensive than the existing. Um, but we would just need to be able to proceed, so we implore you all to uh make a decision.
All right, thank you, sir, thank you. Ms. Appleweight, if you would, please come on back up. Commissioner Mason, I think this is in District Two. Um, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, first of all, I want to say thank you to uh the residents of Lindhurst for coming and voicing your opinion. Uh, I think we value uh your thought process, your opinion. Uh, this is your community, uh, your subdivision. And we want to make sure uh that you have the quality of life uh in your subdivision that you desire and that you deserve. Uh, these are not uh starter homes uh in this subdivision. Uh, they are very uh high-priced and I believe um that the second phase uh homes are going to be even higher um than the first phase and so we want to make sure that uh we uh make the right decisions and we do the right thing. So, um, with that being said, it sound like uh the consensus uh of them that uh they would like to table this so that they can, can have further discussion with the actual builder. Uh, and I'm going to support uh their decision. So I would like to make a motion to table case number MOD two four dash zero 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 two uh for thirty days. Make, it has to be sixty?
Yes, Commissioner, uh, to give us time to advertise it again, yes.
Okay, so sixty days, um, so that they can have an opportunity to have a conversation with this builder and have enough time for re-advertising.
Thank you, sir, is there a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Mason that we table this for sixty days, a second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, staying table for sixty days. Ms. App, Ms. Appleweight.
Thank you, Chairman. Our final item this evening, it is the capital improvement element update, annual updates and the short-term work program update. Uh, in your packages, you have the email correspondence from DCA approving our annual update. And these charts are also um in your packets with the projects. So I won't go through them individually. And of course, we have the arrangements for roads, um, library, parks and rec. So this um report has the same old departments that we had last year. This is because the new proposal to add those new departments, it's still under review by DCA. So this is just the approval for the regular annual update that we always do. And um, here we have our, in, you know, in back fees that we have, it's one point five million right now from twenty twenty-three numbers. And today, we are here to adopt this since DCA has approved it for us to move forward with that. And there is a resolution.
So can I get a motion, please? Thank you, sir, can I get a second? I'm sorry? I can't hear you. Yes, for the last one, uh-huh. Can I get a, thank you, sir. It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Mason, any discussion? All in favor? It passes four oh. Thank you, Ms. Appleweight.
Thank you, Chairman.
Next is citizens' comments. This opportunity will allow citizens to make comments, you have three minutes to do so, please state your name and your address for the record, please. Uh, you have three minutes to do so, please state your name and address for the record, please, you may come at this time. Thank you, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, I'll be brief. I'll be brief. I've already had some discussion with the county manager about it. I'm sure the other, other Commissioners get the request, but I seem to have gotten a lot more lately. If citizens want to know how, if they feel their street should be paved, how do we go about getting that on a list, or getting that prioritized, or, or getting looked at? Do we have a, is there a formal process? If, if not, what is it that we can communicate to the citizens to, to let them know that we, we do hear them and we're taking their, you know, we're taking their, the wishes into consideration? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple announcements. The first one, I just wanted to announce that, I announced it before, but I want to announce it again. In District Two, we are having our Juneteenth Celebration Movie in the Park this coming Friday at Denny Dobbs Park, sixty-two forty-four Highway two twelve north. Bring your lawn chairs, your blankets, your movie snacks. And so, we just want to have a great time there, at the Juneteenth Celebration Movie in the Park on this coming Friday. It is a free community event to all of the residents, and not only for District Two, but for all of Newton County. A lot of times, we have surrounding county individuals that will come. Some of our residents from our municipalities and our cities, they come and tend our movie in the parks as well, and we generally always have a really, really good time. So, I want to invite everybody out to that event. Um, I also wanted to make a second announcement, that I have been honored and appointed to serve as the chairman of the Revenue and Finance Committee for the Association of County Commissions of Georgia. And so, what my role will be as the chairman of that steering committee is to really help address property taxes, sales taxes, fees, all across the one hundred and fifty-nine counties. And so, I have a Vice Chair. We will sit and have policy meetings with our Commissioners in North Georgia. We will have policy committee meetings with our Commissioners in South Georgia, and we will collectively come together, uh, as Commissioners all across the state of Georgia and come up with what we want to see as resolutions that we will submit to our state legislators when they go back into session in two thousand and twenty-five. And so, it is going to be a lot of work, and so, I'm looking forward to really delving into how we can bring relief to our residents all across the state of Georgia when it comes to property tax, sales tax, fees, and really figuring out how we can make the state of Georgia a great place to actually live and to be able to address those concerns. So, I'll be periodically making more updates. We do kind of have an initial platform already that we're gonna start working with, that we're gonna present to the Commissioners in the North Georgia and South Georgia. They'll be able to have a conversation, if there's anything they want to remove or add. I'll be able to lead that discussion to base, basically be able to help address these concerns. I'm excited about moving in that direction and really helping address this area of work throughout the state of Georgia. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sanders?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had the opportunity to attend the SPOSS meeting on yesterday with some of the District Three residents. And Commissioners, I do ask that we get on board to move forward with District Three projects. It was sitting there, listening to all of the projects from twenty seventeen Spring Hill Community Park. It's about to be open in July. The park for District One, twenty twenty-three project, that's about to do, go forth with a groundbreaking. And the residents actually voted for their location, were able to have it at their actual location. And in District Three, the residents who selected their location were not able to have that same opportunity. I would love for us to move forward, and I thank the SPOSS Committee for actually saying, why are we always passing over this project and why it is not complete? The residents are very concerned. There were some rumors out there, and I had to clear that up, that Commissioner Sanders was given three properties, and she denied them all. Let's put that out there, no, not one Commissioner can deny any property. It has to go before the Board of Commissioners, and it's done before the Board of Commissioners, and no properties were brought before me to deny. And so, I want to make sure that was cleared up, 'cause that was actually told to the SPOSS Committee, and I had to clear that up when I spoke with the Chair of that committee. And so, with District Three being the only district that has not moved forward with projects, even the park, selection of those various things, and we spent thousands of dollars for a consultant to have residents take their time, come to the West Side Precinct and select locations, select amenities, select various things, and they were excited about moving forward. But to be a community who also are taxpayers in this community and to see nothing is actually being moved forward, we as a Board are placed on this Board to move for the people, not for one Commissioner, not for various things, not for egos, 'cause we upset with a Commissioner. We are working for the people of Newton County, and that's the only goal that we're supposed to have here in Newton County. So, I'm asking Board that we move forward with these District Three projects because, as I stated, Spring Hill Park that was on the twenty-seventeenth SPOSS will be opened in July. Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. I just want to just say this. I think the last election, um, this is runoff, the election before that one, we had a commission meeting, and it was called off. And the reason why I bring that up is because the town of Portia annexed some property, or want to annex some property. That encompasses District Four, starts over by the old golf club on, on Crow Road. Used to be owned by a former Commissioner Nancy Shokes, and come out, call it back to down a pace road. And it's about six hundred and fifty houses, six hundred and fifty houses. And I was not notified anyway. I mean, what I'm saying is, if I didn't get an email, somebody could have called me, seven seven oh eight nine six, thirty eight twenty-six. And so, that, because my resident was blindsided, they didn't know what was going on in their community, and they should have known. And I agree with them. And the Board, I'd like to thank Commissioner Sanders and Stan Edwards and the ones who denied it because I wasn't here because of, of family of, my wife was sick. But I could have had a Zoom, and maybe addressed it as far as bad for the people. I think there shouldn't be no, nothing that concerns a Commissioner, any Commissioner when it comes to any station, or anything in that district, they shouldn't be notified of. If, even if the county manager had to come over to their house and on their door, make sure that he or she knows. And I was disappointed in that, but I was kind of more relieved that, that we kind of may be on the same path of, hopefully, Portia, I'm hoping they don't pursue it, the six hundred and fifty homes. They're gonna be placed though, people around their homes, and they didn't know anything about it. And so, I want to thank Stan Edwards and Commissioner Sanders and the Board for denying that, something that I didn't know about, and I don't know if they noted about it or not, that was just something thrown on us that shouldn't have been. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. I want to quickly just say a quick thank you to the citizens of Newton County for allowing me to serve another term as the Chair. We look forward to keep working together and doing great things in the community, so thank you so much. Commissioners, I seek a motion that will adjourn, please.
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards, all in favor? All in favor? We stand adjourned. Thank you.